Good afternoon, we are live from Chamber.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us. I would like to call this meeting to order. And I would like to start. We'd like to acknowledge that we meet on the traditional land of TD six territory, and meeting homelands, and acknowledge that diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors footsteps have marked this territory for centuries, such as Cree, Dene, so too Blackfoot, Nikorasu, Azosmeti, and Inuit, now settlers from around the world. And as a settler to this land, someone who came here many, many years ago as an immigrant, this city, this community has been so generous. And their generosity has been extended to me by many, many of the First Nations communities that I had the chance to interact with. So it's always with a deep appreciation and gratitude that I engage my work with all of you, with many of you who deeply care about building a community for everyone, and maintain where everyone is able to thrive, find a stable, appropriate place to call home. So it's very important that we, when we do learn acknowledgement, where we do that, with that commitment for reconciliation and action. So thank you so much for joining us. We'd like to do a roll call of council members. Constable Wright.
Good afternoon.
Constable Knack.
Good afternoon.
Constable Princeby.
Hello.
Constable Stevenson.
Good afternoon.
Constable Paquette.
Good afternoon.
Constable Tang.
Good afternoon.
Constable Hamilton.
Good afternoon.
Constable Rutherford.
Good afternoon.
Constable Salvador.
Good afternoon.
Constable Kirkhill.
Good afternoon.
Constable Rice.
Good afternoon.
And Constable Janz.
Good afternoon.
Constable Janz.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda, Constable Hamilton?
I will move that the agenda for today's meeting, the January fifteenth special city council meeting be adopted.
Seconded by Constable Rice, please vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Constable Rutherford.
Um, yes, as well.
Thank you, Mayor Sohee.
Yes. In favor.
Thank you, Constables Hamilton and Janz. We're just waiting on Constables Paquette and Stevenson, not coming up on your side? It did?
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Okay.
I mean, yes, as well.
Thank you very much, we have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. The vote is carried. Protocol items. Actually, I have one protocol item, and I want to welcome some students joining us. They are from school, Sroya Hafiz School, grade five class, and they are here with their teacher, Megan Harmony, and Ward Dene, which is Constable Paquette's ward. Thank you so much for joining us. Are you going to be talking about any city policies, doing a mock city council?
They did it on Friday.
They did that on Friday, what was your topic of discussion? Who was the mayor? We always invite the mayor down to the podium. Today, quickly, very quickly. Yeah. Okay.
Like this?
Tell us, yes, look this way, tell us your name, and tell us, what are you discussed?
Uh, my name is Lucas, and we discussed, should the LRT be expanded to Maconiki?
Maconiki, woo, there you go. And what? And what, what did you, what was your decision? What, what did you decide?
Uh, yeah, I was carried, nine to one.
Nine to one, wow, that is a good decision. Well, thank you so much for joining us, and, and welcome to all of you, stay as long as you want, and, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. All right, select items for debate.
Mayor, could we just do the emergency?
Oh, yes, please, clerk.
Script just before we started, thank you so much. So, before items are selected for debate, I will just go over emergency response and evacuation procedures for this room. In the event of an emergency, everyone must evacuate through the nearest safe exit. Those seated in the gallery, which is everyone behind me, take direction from security to evacuate. Council, so that's everyone in front of me, takes direction from myself to evacuate. After evacuating the room, please proceed to a stairwell, take the stairs to ground level, and evacuate the building through the doors marked emergency exit, and go to a muster point. Do not take an elevator or walk through City Hall, which includes City Room, which is the room you would have come in through. Persons with limited mobility must immediately, with the aid of a monitor, proceed to the closest stairwell. The monitors for the persons with limited mobility will remain with them during an evacuation, and if, the fire department will evacuate the persons with limited mobility. Those with limited mobility can identify themselves to me, and we will make sure that we have a monitor assigned to you. Finally, if you require first aid at any point during the meeting, please speak directly with a security guard or myself, thank you.
Thank you so much. Select items for debate, there's only one item to select, three point one, I will select that. Request to speak, we do have one, but unfortunately, at council, we don't have the tradition of hearing from public, there's always opportunity, though, for members of the public to speak to council through a committee, as we did this morning, so we will carry on with that, that tradition. There is no specific request for specific time on the agenda, and there's no vote on bylaws, because there are no bylaws to be selected, and our next item is three point one, housing and houselessness verbal report, and this is a presentation from my office. So what I will do is introduce the delegation, then I will pass the chair on to Deputy Mayor Paquette, and I will make a presentation from my, my seat here, as discussed with the city clerk, to follow the proper procedures, and then we will answer questions from council members. My delegation is obviously me, my Chief of Staff, Lisa Holmes, and my Policy Director, Helen Frost, and Andre Corbold will be also part of the, of the delegation. So with that, I will pass the chair to Constable Paquette.
I have the chair.
Thank you.
I have a point of order before the presentation begins. Yesterday, council received a legal briefing from the city solicitor, and there's information in there that I think might affect the process of today. And so I, there might be questions, I certainly have questions, but there might be questions regarding the legal process and the conversation. So I maybe would look to you or the clerk to ask about how we engage in those questions that might, that might impact what can be discussed further.
So maybe first start and then turn it over to our city solicitor, but just a reminder that we are in a special city council, which means that what you discuss today has to be related to what the meeting was called for, which was to discuss housing and homelessness. And so if there are any other items that you wish to discuss, I'd say that they would have to go to the meeting to which they're intended, and maybe I'll just see if our city solicitor has anything to add on the legal side.
Well, I leave it up to council and deputy mayor to determine when you want to go in private and what that looks like. I'll be paying attention to the conversation and can guide you, you know, as a presentation proceeds. I don't think we need to necessarily start with an in-private conversation, but we can play it out as we go, if that suits council.
Okay, that sounds good, and I will just put it out there that if any council member feels that we are crossing a line, just speak up with a point of order, and we'll proceed from there.
Well, thank you, Constable Paquette. Today, I will introduce an action plan and proposal to declare an emergency on housing and houselessness. There are more Edmontonians becoming houseless than there are unhoused Edmontonians finding housing. People are staying unhoused for longer, and their needs are becoming more and more complex. Service providers are being forced into unsustainable expansion to keep up with demand. People are dying. Declaring an emergency will signal to Edmontonians that council understands the magnitude of this problem. This is a call to action. The conversation I want to have today is not specifically about encampments or shelters. I'm here to talk about the system as a whole, and how to best address the root causes. I will also summarize how this council has treated this issue with urgency, and why it has accelerated to an emergency. Next slide, please. To understand why now, we must look at the factors that contribute to the current state in Edmonton. The demand for housing is considerably exceeding our current capacity. The system is in stress. Recently, houseless numbers in our city hit historic high of 3,170 people. The Edmonton Food Bank use is at record high, more than double compared to the highest of the pandemic peak in 2020. Between 2019 and 2022, the number of people seeking housing services within Edmonton has increased by 68%, while the number of people being housed has only increased by 7%. There is a significant and troubling gap. The number of individuals who have discharged, the number of individuals who have been discharged from institutional health and justice facilities into houselessness has increased more than 3,000% compared to 2006 and 2023. Amputations due to frost bites are at 10-year-high. In 2023, 301 people have died due to being unhoused, an increase from 156 people in 2022. Next slide, please. There are other unique economic and market trends that are impacting local housing availability and affordability. Nearly a quarter of Edmontonan households are very low or low income. 3% earn less than $20,000 annually, and 20% is earning less than $45,000. As the cost of housing rises, this group is most at risk of falling into houselessness if action is not taken. Edmonton is experiencing record population growth, reaching a 10-year-high. More people means more housing needs. Almost one in eight households are in core housing need. One in four are rental, renter households. One in three are indigenous renter households, many of which are single-parent households. 10,000 more households will be in core housing need by 2031 if status quo remains. Next slide, please. The city of Edmonton has taken action on housing. We provide record investments with more than $183 million over this budget cycle for affordable housing. This includes funding for affordable housing investment program, affordable housing tax grant that covers municipal taxes for qualifying housing, providing city land for non-market affordable housing, and the creation of a new indigenous-led affordable housing investment grant. We also exceeded on our affordable housing targets between 2019 and 2022. The city has leveraged hundreds of millions of dollars in investment from other orders of government and other partners. The zoning bylaw renewal is a transformational policy that will increase housing density, diversity, and reduce red tape to build more affordable and social housing. Next slide, please. While things like emergency shelter, bridge housing, and opiate response are not core responsibilities of municipal, municipal government, this council has seen a gap and funded life-saving interventions. But it's important to note that city's financial capacity to continue to support these interventions is stretched, then without considerably raising property taxes. Next slide, please. Municipal governments do not have the resources, jurisdiction, or legislative authority to solve the complex issue of houselessness alone. Federal and provincial governments are our important partners, because they have the responsibility, resources, and authority to take action on prevention and diversion. While they have stepped up to some extent, I worry that they have not grasped the severity, scale, and the uniqueness of the challenges that Edmonton is facing. Next slide, please. I also want to note that city's work on housing is not new. We have had many reports and learnings from other actions that the city has undertaken over the years. Today, we heard an update on our affordable housing strategy, and by declaring an emergency, I intend to work with council and administration to find ways to expedite the actions outlined in this report, in that report, sorry. Council also had a dozen reports coming to us this year on all aspects of housing and houselessness emergency that can inform future actions. Next slide, please. Solutions to ending houselessness exist. The Housing First Model, adopted by Edmonton in 2009, has successfully housed 16,721 people. We have solutions ready and waiting. We have shovel-ready projects waiting to be funded to increase housing supply, especially social and affordable housing. This motion is about recognizing that the system is at a breaking point, and that more people will suffer if we don't scale up the solutions. This strategy is about two things. Collaboration between all levels of government and mobilization of our communities to contribute to the solution. Today, I'm hopeful that council will pass the motion to declare an emergency on housing and houselessness. If approved, my first action will be to invite federal minister Sean Fraser, provincial minister Jason Nixon, and Grand Chief of Confederation of TD six First Nations, Cody Thomas, to discuss the urgency of the solutions in Edmonton and address the outstanding actions we have identified in attachment one. A key learning from previous city efforts to tackle the issue of housing is that we must work hand in hand with the community. Declaring an emergency also tells the community that we need their help. This is a very strong This is a very strong call to action, and knowing Edmontonians, I know they will step up. That is why my second action will be to direct administration to establish a task force with a mandate to mobilize all sectors to create vision and raise capital that will be deployed to complement social service mechanisms. In my meetings with social service providers, business owners, the faith community, indigenous collaborators, and broader community, it is clear that there is appetite and will from across the community to share resources and expertise to solve big issues. This multi-disciplinary task force will bring innovative housing ideas from concept to execution. I've asked of city manager Andre Corbald to help me coordinate this group. City administration has identified $3.5 million to allocate, which will act as seed money to fund innovative solutions and attract additional resources of funding through this task force. Next slide, please. Edmontonians are taking this issue seriously. This motion tells Edmontonians that we take this issue seriously as well, and we are doing something about it. I ask you to vote in favor of declaring a housing and houseless emergency in the city of Edmonton and take immediate action. With that, I would like to put forward the motion on the floor.
We're just confirming that we have the most up-to-date language. Just give us a sec while we put it in the chat and up on the screen.
Please proceed, Mr. Mayor, to read in your motion.
There you go. That Attachment 1 be added to January 15, 2024, Mayor's Office Report MO 02362326. That the city of Edmonton declare a housing and houselessness emergency. Number three, that the mayor on behalf of city council invite the government of Canada, government of Alberta, and Confederacy of Treaty VI First Nations for a meeting to discuss collaborative solutions to the emergency, including those identified in Attachment 1 of January 15, 2024, Mayor's Office Report. Number four, that administration, A, establish a task force led by mayor, city manager, and appointed members of council, consisting of community leaders with a mandate to mobilize all sectors to create vision and raise capital that can be deployed to complement social service mechanism. B, allocate $3.5 million from the community safety involved being reserve unallocated funding to act as seed money to fund innovative solutions and attract additional resources, sources of funding through the task force. Number five, that administration provide a verbal report with a list of immediate actions that administration can take, including, not limited to options, oops. Not limited to options such as the provision of city-owned land to service providers able to immediately increase the number of indigenous-led transitional spaces in Edmonton and existing recommended actions that can be expedited. That will be reported back on the February 27, 2024 Urban Planning Committee, Part 5.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Sohe, seconded by Counselor Wright. And I will now pass, unless you have any more.
No, that's it.
All right, I return the chair. Oh, you're the mover, and actually, as mover, for those who may not be aware, I will be chairing for the duration, unless I have to go, and then I'll pass that along. So at this point, is there an administration presentation to go along with this, or did the mayor's presentation cover it? Mayor's presentation covered it.
We're good, council.
Okay, so I'll open the floor up to questions. Please sign up. And I see Counselor Cartmel is first on the list. Please proceed.
Thank you, Counselor Paquette. I'm going to suggest that we move into private. And we can procedurally. We can move to the back, to the boardroom in the back. Don't have to displace all the people.
Okay, I will just get some advice on this. Are the questions that are going to be asked, are they going to be required to be in private?
They're further to the confidential memo that we received from our lawyer.
My hearing isn't the greatest, and I just noticed that we're getting chatter from the audience. And I regret to inform you that in council chambers, we do not allow people to applaud or to denigrate in any other way, any sort of outbursts, in order to retain the decorum of the meeting. And I understand that the emotions are high, I get it. But this is the standard procedure that has been in place for city council since inception. And so if that is the motion, is there a second? Or would you like to explain?
A second.
I do need to know what section we're going into private under.
Let me need some help with that. I want to ask questions about the confidential memo that we received via email late last night from the city solicitor.
Section 27, Madam Kirk.
Section 27.
So that'd be section 27, and you feel that this would be important to clarify before we return to ask questions in public?
I do.
Okay.
It wasn't me that declared the memo confidential. If the memo is confidential, then the questions are confidential.
Okay, and is the intent then after that is satisfied that we come back into public to have public questions? So do I have a second, or?
Second.
Okay, and second by Counselor Prince Pei. Any debate on this?
Yes. I don't know if you want to go through the list.
Are the names on the list to ask about the motion to go into private, or are they general questions for the mover and for administration? Otherwise, Counselor Tang has a question about the motion to go into private. Okay, Counselor Tang, please proceed.
I guess more just speaking to, I will not be supporting this. I think I have lots of questions just on the motion on the table right now, which I think is fair for a public discussion. And if there are confidential questions, I would recommend we go into private after at least one round of questions in public. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, just have some questions to legal on the, because we can't talk about the content of the memo in public, I understand that, but my presentation so far that I have made, in my view, does not touch on the spirit of that or the contents within that memo. Do they touch on that? If they don't, then why would we be going into camera?
I don't know what questions will come up, Mr. Mayor, so questions are rising from this presentation. I leave it up to council to decide when or if they want to move into private, but I can't anticipate the questions that will come up.
Yeah, so what I would suggest, Chair, is that at least ask questions on my presentation, right? If they touch on the memo, then we can probably go into camera.
Yeah, okay, so. Does that satisfy your concern, Counselor Cartmel, that councillors will abide by the contents of the memo, and if it contravenes that or touches on it, that we pause that question?
Yeah, I can withdraw my motion for the moment.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so let's proceed, please, no outbursts. Don't put me in that position, please, to have to mention it. So in that case, we will continue with questions, starting with, next on our list was Counselor Rutherford. And let's, Counselor Cartmel, you actually have questions that you'd like to proceed with. Okay.
Okay, thank you. To the mover, I really appreciate this motion, and I know that when this was originally called, one of my concerns was that it was not going to have action, so I really am happy to see that. But I do have a few questions, I guess, that I think, you know, as a governor in this position, we need to get those answers for the public. But one thing that's been really mulling in my mind, and I really don't know how we lost sight of it, is we had $100 million, or not $100 million, $1 million in 2022 for indigenous-led encampment, and we had $900,000 for ongoing indigenous-led encampment support. I guess to Mr. Corbald, how, since 2022, how was that used in 2023 or into 2024? And what is the status on that indigenous-led encampment?
Yeah, I don't have that with me readily today, right now. I'll just see if Ms. Fleman has anything on that or anybody else in the delegation.
Thank you for the question. We will be providing some more information around the indigenous-led shelters and the EOI's. A lot of that money has been used to support a number of the folks who submitted their EOI's that were made in the spring.
What is an EOI?
Oh, sorry, expression of interest for indigenous-led shelter and transitional housing.
Okay, but what about the $900,000 in ongoing community safety and well-being funding since 2022 for indigenous-led encampment support? What is that, what was that used for in 2022 and 2023?
The $900,000 has been contracted to an outreach provider, and $1 million is being used for the three things, the program for indigenous-led shelter and.
So it's contracted out in what way?
To assist with an outreach provider, I think, recognizing that we want to ensure that we are honoring First Nations perspectives and that our team wanted to go up to the community and get that kind of support and expertise.
So was it engagement or was it support? Because those are different.
Yeah, I'll have to get those details to you.
Yeah, I thought those details are very important to me because $900,000 for community safety and well-being was supposed to go to boots-on-the-ground, not, they're very different to me. So I definitely want that information.
Yeah, I can see if anyone else in the delegation are.
No, I want to just, I want to be mindful of my time.
Okay.
Another thing that I was wondering about is the winter emergency response, Mr. Corbald. And it was pretty disheartening to me, and I know to many Edmontonians, seeing people lined up outside the Bissell Centre in the very extreme cold weather. Did we not think to have buses or other, like, what is, what kind of lessons learned or things do we need to learn from this in terms of our extreme weather emergency response?
Yeah, I think the, I mean, the full response was in play at the time, including the warming buses, the emergency shelter space, including the ones we had done with and coordinated with Al Rashid Mosque on. So all of those procedures are in place, including allowing people to use our rec centers and other areas. So I can't speak exactly to why there were people outside Bissell Centre, but it wasn't sort of, so I just don't know from an operational perspective that was there. But I do know that our full extreme weather response, as per our public service announcement, was in play those evenings.
That's what's concerning to me, though.
Okay.
That's what's concerning because if our full response was in play and we still had vulnerable members of our community in very, very cold situations, to me, there's something broken with our response.
Mr. Mayor, I think we are heading into private territory that we should just be mindful of. We're no longer talking about homelessness and housing.
Okay, so I absolutely do not want to have to get the room cleared here.
I completely.
Excuse me, pardon me. I am an indigenous person who is chairing this meeting, and we are all persons, but what I am trying to. One moment, please, if I may. The reason I mention that is because we care about this issue, which is exactly why this meeting has been called. We also have to abide by certain laws and rules as a body. We are not permitted to have a free-for-all conversation. We also have restrictions. This is not a back-and-forth. I am sorry. I hate to be in this position, but if there are further outbursts, the people who are outbursting will have to be asked to leave in order to honor all the other people who also care about this, who want to hear this conversation. I hope that's clear. With all compassion and respect, we all have to do our part to respect everyone in this room today. And I understand that you have your emotions and your feelings and your passion because I share them. And I also would like to engage in outbursts, but I have respect for all of the other people here who are trying to listen to the answers. I hope that is clear, and I hope that's sufficient as a statement. Does that work for you? Whoever has been making the outbursts, I only heard it from this direction. So, and unfortunately, that, like, in order to retain the decorum of this meeting and to be able to continue the meeting in a productive way and in a good way, if there are further outbursts, the people who are creating those outbursts may be asked to leave. Thank you. Please proceed.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Paquette.
And also, let's steer away from encampment questions.
Yes, yes, I mean, I guess to legal, we've discussed the winter emergency response in public many times at committee. I'm not understanding how I'm focused on questions on our winter emergency response. To me, it's absolutely in line with housing and homelessness. I'm not understanding how that's steering off course.
Well, I'll leave it up to council to make that call, but just a reminder, we are in a hearing tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, when some of these issues will be talked about.
Just to interject, and we'll continue with your time, Counselor Rutherford, we, and for the knowledge of the public, we are having two meetings. This meeting is focused on the housing aspect. Tomorrow, we will be receiving an update on, I believe, the encampments. So we'll stick to the topic for today, and then we'll continue with the questions about the other issues tomorrow.
Okay, I will concede the rest of my time.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Tang was unfortunately on the list to speak to the motion, but then she was also on the list, so she got missed, so we'll go to Counselor Tang now. Oh, okay, well, how about this? Counselor Wright, please proceed, and then we'll go to Counselor Tang. Councillor Wright, please proceed, and then we'll go to councillor Tang.
Thank you very much, councillor Paquette. I guess to the mover, thank you very much for for making this motion, I guess, more about the people than the politics. And I think that's where our our focus needs to be. And I'm just wondering, at what point do we include the people that are are impacted and hear from from our houseless neighbors?
Yeah, that is something that we have identified, that I have committed to follow up on. My office has committed to follow, working with city manager's office around further engagement with the with the social sector, as well as the the people who are at the, you know, at the front lines, such as the mutual aid groups, as well as the people living who are experiencing homelessness. So that is on the on overdue list for the for the next steps.
Okay, because I know there was some engagement for the affordable housing strategy this morning that we received, but that didn't seem to be satisfactory to those that that spoke.
Yeah, and also administration has engaged as well, right? But we want to supplement that work through my office as well, working with city manager.
So would would that be included then as part of some of the task force efforts or?
Yeah, could be part of that. Obviously, there'll be absolutely important that the people with lived experience and social sector and and others are part of that that conversation and the task force.
Because I know there's there's so many in our community. I mean, just just look at the turnout here today that that want to support that. And so thank you very much, Ms. Flammen. I just a follow-up question to councillor Rutherford's. You talked about the funding that went to an outreach provider. Who was that? Or was it multiple?
So the 2022 money was used to fund NICUM for the encampment maintenance prototype and to augment Bissell and Boyle's encampment F T Es. But we I'm talking with the team, we can get you a fulsome answer for both of those funding envelopes in an email by tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and that's, yeah, that's, oh, oh, back to the mover, sorry. The community leaders, you mentioned businesses as well, business community?
I would say all sectors of the community, including the business community. And I have directly heard from a number of business leaders that are willing to step up, and they have stepped up. For example, it was such a good example of community business mobilization for the the Thunderbird facility by Boyle, right? And there's an opportunity for us to mobilize organizations in the business community to and individual businesses, along with the rest of the community.
Okay, okay, thank you, I just want clarity on that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Tang, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Very much appreciate the presentation. I guess, you know, you've outlined a lot of the, to the mover, you've outlined a lot of different roles and jurisdictions, amounts that city has contributed. Is that in kind of in one place where the public can easily assess that the rest of council can easily see, kind of the number of advocacy asks, funding dollars for all levels of government?
Yes, we have a number of ways we will communicate. Maybe I'll go over to my staff to further elaborate on that.
Sure.
Tatcham One outlines a lot of the specific actions and requests that we've made out of letters, meetings, as well as like informal conversations and formal conversations with different levels of government. But our office is planning to create a website similar to what we did for the downtown safety and transit safety. So it'll be one stop where people can go in, write letters to elected officials at different levels, and get information about what the city has done, as well as what the city is asking or proposing as solutions.
Great, thank you very much for that. You know, I think that was some very on-point questions, which I also had by councillor Wright. I'm glad to hear that 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 you are planning for some of the the meetings with folks who are directly impacted by the current emergency. Well, you have an opportunity to revisit many of the conversations we've had in the past, ideas people with lived experience have shared already, and opportunities to not just engage and have meetings, but to mend relationships and trust, which is a very different conversation.
Oh, absolutely, and the administration has been engaging, we've been having engaging. We definitely need to ramp up their work and and engage in a more meaningful, thoughtful way, not just listening, but what are you hearing? And what are you listening and turning that into actionable things and implementing and incorporating that into a into our strategy.
And I think that will be quite important for the success of everything else you lay out here. Questions on point. Four, for this task force, I guess, can you share a bit more about how you envision this task force? Is there going to be a secretariat? Is this going to be arms-length from city administration? I guess I'm mostly curious about how open to, say, grassroots solutions, innovative solutions that this task force will accommodate.
Absolutely, I think we'll go back and visit the other task force that were created in the past. And they did have city support, and there was a representation from across sector of of Edmontonians. And we will look at and see what were some of the drawbacks as well of those those task forces and try to deal with those. That's why it's so important that the that Andre's leadership and my office can jointly work together to come up with some terms of reference, maybe Andre, if you want to further elaborate on that.
Yeah, I'd just say that I think that's all doable, councillor Tang, in terms of what you say. And we can sort of certainly report back on that as we as we talk about the work of that task force.
Yeah, I I imagine you're considering kind of the benefits and drawbacks of different structures. And, you know, I would just caution, maybe a task force like what we're talking about be given more room to to respond, to be agile, to to experiment, to respond to the ideas that are surfacing.
Yeah, I would agree, which is why we also sort of did our best to find that seed money, so that we don't have to wait. So, yes, I agree, yeah.
And would that seed money be welcomed for other investment by other sectors, perhaps? So, for example, I heard the business community, is that is that something that people can contribute to?
I see no reason why not, and I think it would be a good way to see if we can get some philanthropic support or some business community support to some of those initiatives. And by having them participate in it with the ideas, I think that would be helpful.
Great.
Just to supplement, absolutely, I think there's an opportunity for us to engage and increase that amount by, you know, working with United Way, Community Foundation and others, yeah.
Thank you. My last question, in the number of part five with this report that's going to be coming back, what is going to be on the table? We've had lots of conversation in the past around microshelters. You know, we've seen Pala Homes come up in the last week or so. Are are more of those kinds of examples going to be be on the table?
I believe so, councillor, yeah.
I I will like to, I will, I will like us to be bold in this in this instance, and I look forward to seeing that.
Certainly, yeah.
Councillor Jones? Thank you, councillor Tang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if I'm, Mr. Chair, questions to the mover then. So if I'm to understand, this motion is sort of, one of the key drivers here is talking about getting everybody in the room together. The other piece is around around the space question, around how many square feet of city property do we have right now that we could be mobilizing towards temporary shelter solutions? Is, am I, am I understanding that you're looking like, is this sort of a fast-tracking? Would it be identifying for permit or sale or donation? Like, I just, I'm trying to understand.
I I want absolutely clear that my intent is not to deal with symptoms. My intent to deal with root causes. So we need more housing. So if we can free up city-owned property, work with social providers and housing providers to make their land available, that for more supportive housing and affordable housing with the after-round services or transitional housing can be built, right? So I think that's where I would like to focus. That's my intent.
So that could include like us identifying properties and and doing dollar leases or or just parting with them altogether?
Yeah.
The other piece, I'm I'm not sure if your team had it, but the last slide, Edmonton requires 15.4 billion over 10 years to solve the housing crisis. Now, what what would be if we sort of assume a shared responsibility here? What would be the share of that amount per year for the city, the province and the feds? I don't I don't know if your team has that.
No, we don't, because this is a number that has been identified by the that report that we discussed this morning, the operator housing, housing strategy. But how we implement that strategy, I think those things that we need to have to, we need to figure out.
Yeah, I mean, full support for the motion, obviously. I I think it's great to great to get this attention on on the issue from from everyone. I guess one of my questions was, and I'm not sure if it needs to be spelled out specifically, but I appreciate the emphasis on food bank usage and on other other gaps identified, including low-income renters and and others. But one piece I just wanted to flag specifically that admin would look at is the youth angle, representing White Avenue, like I see more and more unhoused young people. And I know, I believe, 600 youth in government care right now will be aging out of support. They won't receive a single dollar from the government, and and I believe they're 65% more likely to become homeless than the gen pop and 85% more likely to be trafficked and many other, many other terrible outcomes. So if we can, I don't know if it needs to be in the motion specifically, but if maybe for for you and administration that we we don't lose that youth angle.
Yeah, the reason I identified those trends is that those trends are going in the wrong direction. And if we don't tackle them, we will see more and more people falling into homelessness, right? And we will always be responding to symptoms, not to root causes. That's why, why, why now, right? I'm trying to answer that, why now calling for an emergency?
And just to confirm, like, the city has no ability to do like rent control or rent freeze? Is that, is there any, anything like that in our repertoire?
We we don't have that ability, but I think if we are able to create, I'm hopeful that we will be able to create a table of for for orders of government, right? And us, province, fed and and First Nations. And there will be many opportunity to discuss and hold each other accountable.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Jones, councillor Salvador.
Yeah, thank you so much to the mover for bringing this forward. You know, initially, my my support was contingent on seeing an action plan to follow the declaration itself, and I see that through part five. So really appreciate that piece. And maybe just ask a few questions about part five. I'm hearing that a number of things will be on the table, everything from transitional housing, bridge housing, opportunities for short-term leases, to activate city land. To administration, will will costing be included on those potential immediate actions when we receive that back so that they are are truly actionable once they're in front of us?
Yeah, councillor, I think we absolutely have to do that as we as we go. And I I think the way to do this in order, from a speed perspective, is as we have a cost for one thing, as we bring that forward, we don't sort of wait till we have the cost for all the things. So we will bring those forward for sure with with costs so that they can be considered by council.
Excellent, because another question was just going to be the the timing of this. I see the report would be due back in February. And, I mean, if there are solutions that we can implement and scale up sooner, I would I would hope that those opportunities get brought before us, not not waiting just because of the due date. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, it does make sense. We we have started some stuff already, so like I'm I'm not too worried about the timeline here, given some of the work that's happened in the last five weeks. A lot of it's been focused on shelters, but a lot of that, like, for example, the space for more housing, we've evaluated the space from a shelter perspective. It doesn't, you know, we can evaluate the space for a housing perspective pretty easily in terms of transitioning to that next piece.
Okay, excellent. And maybe to, either to the mover or or the delegation, how many other Canadian municipalities at this point have declared a housing and homelessness emergency?
So the city of Ottawa and the city of Toronto have both declared housing emergencies to date, as far as I know.
Okay, that's that's good to know, so we're not, we're not alone in this space. It it really does have.
And I think Hamilton has also declared, you know, state of.
Okay, so really, really underscoring the the national scale of this this challenge. Yeah, and I think, yeah, answered the question around timing. The seed money for the for the innovative solutions in 4B, so that would be coming from community safety and wellbeing, which I think is makes sense in terms of a source. Is the intention there for those innovative solutions to be sort of rapidly deployed? Or are those more longer-term, like incubate good ideas that can be implemented in the long run that match up with our affordable housing strategy?
I I would envision that a lot of, some of the ideas will be driven by the community through the task force and engagement through the task force. That's something we hear from the community all the time, that we have solutions, right? Why are you not working with us to implement those solutions? I think this will create an opportunity that could be immediate actions or medium term or 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 more more long term.
Okay, so there's flexibility there, that's excellent. That's it for me for now, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Salvador. Next, we have councillor Hamilton.
Thank you. I was surprised, I want to say on Thursday, to find out that there has been a cabinet committee formed to discuss some of these issues around housing and homelessness, one that includes Grand Chief Cody Thomas and Chief McPhee, who've been sworn into the committee. Mr. Corbold, I understand from the press conferences last week, briefings have been provided to the city. Have you been briefed on the work of this cabinet committee?
I haven't been briefed on the work of the cabinet committee, but we have been working with the province and EPS on doing a bunch of work around what I think has emanated out of that cabinet committee, because I'm not part of it. And a lot of those details are things, and I and I did brief council, I think, in our last day before the recess, that that had happened and that we were working with them, and that I would come back and brief council in detail, which is what we're doing tomorrow.
Okay, and I guess, Mayor Sohe, have you been briefed on the the subject of this this cabinet committee?
Not not directly by the by the province, but through city manager and through our last meeting and through our connections to to some of the ministries, right? So we have been back and forth on sharing some of the information, right? But my understanding is that what is this, what the approach I'm putting is different in a way that the, again, not presuming what the what will come out tomorrow. But again, I think provincial focuses will be more on the on the symptoms, not on the root causes, right? So that's where I think my, but again, not presuming what will come tomorrow.
And I understand that. Mr. Corbold, do you understand if this cabinet committee has anything to do with the subject of housing, homelessness, transitional housing, Indigenous-led initiatives or collaboration with First Nations?
Yeah, I think my understanding is some of that's in there, and most of that's from the press release last week, but yeah.
Does any of this conversation, or is it possible that this would relate to an intergovernmental collaboration?
Yeah, absolutely, and I think I briefed that to council back in December.
And do you think it could require resources from the city, including labor or financial?
Likely, yes. I also think it could include allocation of more funding.
And I understand council is to be briefed on this tomorrow.
Correct.
Why wouldn't, why are we not being briefed on this in advance of this meeting?
I, we talked last week about at A R C, and I requested some time of council this week to do that briefing, and it's been scheduled for Tuesday morning, so.
All right. Thank you for that. I want to pivot now to the timeline for implementation. The notice today requires a special council meeting to declare a housing and houselessness emergency. That is point two. From today's meeting, until the first units of housing would be built, what is your estimated timeline?
Oh, I I think we have numerous shovel-ready projects that are being proposed by the community, particularly Indigenous-led projects are ready to go. And we submitted those to the province, we submitted those to the federal government. The sooner we can start acting, the sooner the the shovels will be will be in the in the in the ground, right? So as we, you know, as we always try to do with expediting these projects.
All right, and I think something else I'd like to understand better is we're talking about, I guess, the the issue always. uh, the, the issue always in talking about affordable housing has been that it is a, there's a spectrum of need. There is acute need, there are people who are unhoused, who are sleeping in encampments today. And then there are people who are struggling to make their ends meet, but are, are housed, um, and need below-market housing. And I'm, uh, not entirely clear on what this, what need this emergency motion is meant to address.
I think it's to, uh, bring that coordination and also the urgency and creating this government table uh, will allow us to hold each other accountable to what commitments, what area of responsibility we all have. What a city's responsibility, what province, federal, and how we can work with the First Nations communities, right? It's not gonna be a silver bullet solutions to anything that we do, but we need to, uh, recognizing the urgency, we need to, I, in my mind, uh, expedite as much as possible actions that we can all take. Yep.
Thank you, uh, councillor Carmel.
Great, thank you. So, um, I guess first of all to the clerk, uh, there's reference made in point four to a task force. Uh, does that have a special definition within the context of the city of Edmonton? Does, does that require a bylaw? Does it require, uh, other bureaucratic apparatuses to set up?
Not that I could flag for you right now. Uh, I think where we would be looking to make sure it aligns with our policy on civic agencies is in relationship to any appointment of a, of a council member. That is where, um, we generally get involved when there is a council member appointment. So we would just be looking to work with all partners to make sure that the appropriate tools are in place for us to do that.
When we do council advisory committees, those have a special definition, they, they require a bylaw to be set up, that kind of a thing?
That's, that's right. Uh, I, I believe there is, um, definitions for things like, um, ad hoc or temporary council committees. But my understanding is that this is not what that would be, um, that this is a different, uh, this is of a different nature.
Okay. So the reason I'm asking that is that I'm, I'm, I want to come back to point two, like, so to the mover, Mayor Sohe. Uh, you've said consistently this afternoon that you're looking to root causes, that you're talking about housing. You're not necessarily talking about encampments. But I think the urgency and the emergency that fills this room is about encampments. So I'm a little concerned about declaring an emergency that is understood by the general public to address encampments when your intent is to declare an emergency to move on housing solutions. Uh, and I, I think back to other emergencies that council has declared that have been distracting, that have been divisive, uh, that, and that have been, you know, because they have not moved to particular actions, have been characterized as performative. So do we actually need to declare an emergency to do any of the things in your motion? And does that actually cloud the definition of what your motion is trying to do?
Yeah, I, I think that's a very good point, councillor, councillor Carmel, because I, I would not have put forward a motion to declare housing and houseless emergency as a performative act, because, uh, that would not have achieved anything, right, other than give hope to the community that we would not been able to, uh, live up to. That's why attaching actions is important to me. That's why I have worked out those actions. The reason for me is that if we don't take this as an emergency, we will continue to deal with symptoms, and those symptoms will continue to grow. And there will be continued division in the community as we have seen over the last couple of weeks. That's why I want to get to the root causes and really come up with tangible, workable solutions that are more sustainable, that are more meaningful in a way that we are making a dent, or at least stopping the, the growing population of houselessness that we are seeing in, uh, in our community.
I under, I understand that motivation. Uh, my concern though is that there's five hundred people in this room, not one point five million people in this room. And when they hear emergency, they're talking, they're thinking, they're talking, they're feeling about the encampment emergency that we're all feeling, exacerbated by this cold weather. So is the intent of this motion that actually the, the emergent and urgent issue of the encampments is to wait until we find solutions to the housing emergency?
Uh, I think the, the, the response on an encampment is separate from where my intent is, and we can talk about that tomorrow, right? Uh, for me is, it is so important for me that we declare this emergency because to recognize how critical this issue is and how long-term implication will be if we don't start taking it to the, to the seriousness that an emergency would require. So it's an emergency not in the, in the sense that we will be able to tackle this issue in a couple of months, then it'll be over, right? For me, it is like climate change emergency, right? It is ongoing in a way that you need to look for every opportunity to make that difference in the, in the lives of people. And if we don't do that, then we will continue to further fall into a, uh, into, into, into those gaps, yeah.
All right, thank you councillor Carmel. Uh, councillor Principa.
Thank you Chair Paquette. Uh, I'll, uh, ask questions of the mover. So some of my questions were answered, but I, I do have a concern about the declaration of a housing and houselessness emergency. Simply because, as you said, it's, it's basically their words, they're not actions. A declaration won't change anything unless there are actions with it, correct?
Yeah, declaration, declaration on its own would be more performative than without actions. That's why it is important that number three, four, five, and four A and B are so critical.
Right, so if we don't have two in there, we could still work on the other items.
I think it, we will lose the, um, the urgency and we will lose the ability of the community to be mobilized around an emergency, the way we will do in an emergency. That's why, I, I, for me, like, you know, looking at, uh, the number of people dying, like, from, uh, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, the number of people dying doubled, right, from hundred fifty-six to three hundred people, right? So it is an emergency in that way, but it's an emergency that we will not be able to solve in a couple of months, right? But it is an emergency. It is more maybe sustained emergency caused by decades of underinvestment, right? So, yeah.
And I guess I, my concern is I don't want public perception to be that we haven't taken this seriously before, because we have. Council has been very committed and and this is.
Okay, uh, one moment, uh, this is the last warning. I am very sorry, but if we have another outburst, the people who are talking will be removed. You will not be asked. Okay. I am sorry, you have to leave.
I move recess.
We would actually prefer you to stay.
Point of order.
To stay.
I, point of order councillor Paquette.
All right.
Call recess.
One moment. We're going to pause proceedings. We are going to take one moment to breathe. And again, if we have one more round of applause, we're going to have to clear the room, and I don't want to have to do that. We don't want to have to do that. Uh, I will take a moment as a chair. I'll take a moment as chair to explain that this is literally, this is what we are here to talk about. This is exactly what we are talking about. That's why we are in this meeting, and we are all asking these questions. You have heard the mayor talk about this. The reason we know that three hundred people have died over three hundred this year is because the mayor has raised the issue. This is why we are here. We take this very seriously, and people are in pain. You've lost people. I have lost people in the past few weeks. I understand. It's so important that we have this conversation. It's so important that we take what actions we can as a municipality. That is why we are here. There's been a lot of information in media that has laid blame for the houseless situation on the shoulders of the city, and as representatives, we take responsibility for what we can do. And that's, again, why we're here, but we are not the sole organization or entity, and not even the primary entity that is responsible for the situation that we are seeing. So if we could have calm, we are trying to address this in a good way. Please proceed, councillor Principa.
Thank you Chair Paquette. So, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say again, do you feel that there's a perception that possibly council hasn't taken this seriously in the past?
As part of the present, presentation, I think I tried to highlight the number of things that, uh, previous council and this council has, uh, has implemented and investments we have made. Obviously, those investments are not enough to meet the, the scale of the challenge. That is why it's so important that we bring, uh, other partners to the table. That is e- exactly what, uh, one of the things that I have included in my motion. So we have stepped up, more needs to be done, and the scale is absolutely, the challenge is insurmountable in a way that the investment we are making and we need to make are considerably higher than where we are.
Okay, and would you consider, uh, a report on establishing a task force so that we know the implications, the resources, as opposed to just establishing a task force? Can we request a report to establish a task force?
I think, uh, we can definitely report on the, on the creation of the task force, right? And, uh, but if we were to wait for a report, then make a decision to create a task force, I think we will be losing time. That is so necessary that we need to be stacked, start acting today. We should have started acting yesterday, I don't know, uh, years ago, right? I think, uh, that's my concern, the more time the, we wait, that the, the, uh, that's a concern for me.
All right, and then, um, that the mayor speak to, uh, or invite government of Canada, government of Alberta, treaty Confederacy or Treaty Six First Nations for a meeting. Have you not met with them before, or?
I, I have, but I think we have never met in the same room, right, and at the same table, right? So I think it is so important that all of us come together at the same table.
Okay, so again, does it need to be a motion, or is it something that you can just?
I think, I think a traction from council on behalf of Edmontonians will carry far much weight uh, to convene such a meeting and, uh, and then, uh, just a request, simple request from mayor's office.
Thank you councillor Principa. Councillor Rice?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I thank you, uh, Mayor Sohe for the presentations. There are lots of, lots of information there and for the, for the immediate action, uh, also for the long-term, uh, goals as well. So, because right now, uh, we all care about this important issue and for our city. Our council, including five hundred people is in the room, I, I cannot see you, and also for the people watching online, they're not in the room. Uh, this is demonstrate how we care about our people, our Edmontonians. Uh, but my question and to administration, Mr. Corbold specifically to you, uh, is about if this is the emergency, what is our cities immediately operational actions? So I'm specifically talk about operational actions, not about the preparation actions to address emergency. So is there anything and already planned or a need and already in mind and could support this motion? And to really address this emergency needs?
Yeah, councillor, I think we have been working on some things. I think the indigenous housing business case that, uh, the mayor's office and our office put together. Um, you know, that would look for, uh, look to establish twelve hundred indigenous-led affordable housing spaces is something that could be done. I think there are other OP twelve changes we've made to reallocate, um, money into housing, uh, solutions as per council's direction. Um, you know, we had, we had put together an internal, um, housing team to, to sort of break red tape and move more efficiently on establishing new, new potential pieces, like, especially on the land pieces and finding folks who are willing to invest if we can provide land for free, those kinds of things. And then in the meantime, um, as I've indicated before, and as we'll brief tomorrow, we've been working on some of the, you know, the shelter capacity spaces with the province and, and how we can enhance, uh, any encampment response. So I think that is going on, um, but I, but I would say that we, we do need more resources, uh, to come at play with all of this.
Also, I understand this motion and it will provide the, the funding source support and for three point five millions. But my question, I'm asking this question, why I'm asking this question? I want to say, for example, do we have like two weeks and we have some sort of immediate actions we could reflect to support emergency? And then how we implement that, and instead of for my preparation actions here? So that is why I try to get a clear sense from city operating perspective. What's that operational action immediately and could support? So that's, that's why, and then specifically go back, uh, Mayor Sohe's, uh, presentation on the page four. Talk about the targets, the unit targets we already achieve between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-two budget cycle. And then my question to you, why I'm asking this, is that six forty-four supportive housing in the presentation is already achieved, is already occupied right now? Or we still not achieve that target yet?
Sorry councillor, was that a question for admin?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I don't know. Jen, do you know that?
I believe that we have, um, between the twenty twenty-three, uh, or sorry, up to twenty twenty-two, but I will confirm and get back to you.
Uh, so that means that six hundred forty-four supportive housing are right one hundred percent occupied it? And or do we still have capacity in that target and to support emergent leads?
So I can confirm that the six hundred and forty-four have been built already, but we need around seventeen hundred more. This is the kind of information that will be coming forward in the reports that we discussed at the affordable housing strategy this morning in committee.
So, and I think the point here councillor is that we, we don't have enough capacity right now.
Uh, so because I'm asking, I'm asking support, supportive in housing, I'm not asking affordable, because this supportive house could be used right away. That is why I'm ask, what's the capacity we have right now?
The six hundred and forty-four are, uh, through our coordinated access completely, um, accounted for in terms of, uh, folks already using them.
Uh, okay, so I will start, stop here and because my time is out. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Wright. Uh, can you take the chair, please?
Uh, yes, I take the chair.
Thank you. Uh, to city manager, uh, so the, the wording of this motion, um, is what it has to be because of present circumstances. But, uh, again, to point to councillor Carmel, uh, the folks in, uh, attendance today are here because they're concerned about what's happening right now. And so there are a number of things that we can do that aren't related to encampments, but that you haven't gotten the will of council on, but could possibly be within your discretion. I'm just wondering if you want to talk about that a little bit.
Uh, with regard to housing or encampments?
Uh, well, uh, housing or encampments, but just the fact that there are people on the streets right now who are maybe in exigent circumstances and maybe, uh, there are shelters that need some support. And although we didn't budget for that because we couldn't have anticipated the fact that an area that we actually don't hold any responsibility for legally or financially is in dire straits. Is there anything as a city manager that you look at and you're like, well, you know what? We can actually step up there and, and, uh, offer some assistance.
Yeah, I would just say that we've, you know, we've been working. Yeah, I would just say that we've, you know, we've been working really hard with other partners on increasing the shelter capacity. At this time last year, we had about 600 shelters. And now we have, you know, over 1,700.
Now, when we say we, I just want to clarify, we mean the entity responsible and we say we because we can access it as a city.
Yeah, shelters in the city.
I think it's very clear that we, that we make it crystal clear who has ownership here.
And then we have in the past, as you know, sheltered some or funded some of our own shelters when we felt it necessary to do so with, with city money.
With only city money?
We have, last year, we did that once on the West End. We've also partnered with warming areas and of course, we do what we can with warming buses, use of our recreation facilities when they're open and those kinds of city assets.
Now, is there any reason why we can't make efforts immediately to help reduce the stress of the situation and to help people?
I, I think we're doing as much as we can from a resource perspective with what we have right now.
As far as the lack of money?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, now, some people won't understand that. They'll be like, well, the city has money. What are you talking about? So when you say lack of money, you mean lack of budgeted money as far as tax rate without going into deficit that we have to pay for this year by the end of the year?
Yeah, I would say we've allocated all the resources we have right now and with the exception of this 3 million from CSWB. And that would be a minor enhancement if this motion gets approved.
All right, and I'm just, just to be clear, because you're also under pressure from council to reduce spending and to reallocate funding to core needs. And so I would assume that some of your decision-making is just the fact that you've got this overarching mandate from council about being a little tighter with the dollar.
Yeah, certainly, we're trying to absorb money, we're trying to spend less. We're in what I would refer to as a spending constraint based on the direction we started about a year ago, and that was reinforced again in the last budget.
So to free you up, you would need direction from council?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Mayor, if, if there is a declaration of a housing and houselessness emergency, I would put it to you that maybe we, there's something that council might have to do that would give immediate results so that people can see that this was taken seriously as an emergency. Your thoughts on that?
I think that's why number five is so important, that what are the actions identified in our housing efforts that how we can expedite those, right? That that will be part of that and also ideas could come from the community that could immediately be funded through 3.5 million dollars.
So the immediately, but it doesn't specifically indicate social services or helping services for issues that we're seeing right now, so I might make an amendment to that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Rice. I'll take the chair back.
Yeah, return the chair to you.
Okay, now, we will vote on a second round of questions if that is the rule of council. Moved by Counselor Rutherford, second by Counselor Tang. Please vote.
We have all the votes.
Please just play the vote. And that is carried. Please proceed, Counselor Wright.
Thank you. I understand there's, there's concern about declaring the emergency, but I guess to the mover then, would that sort of help to maybe like amplify the advocacy that has been done that maybe hasn't been heard quite clearly?
Absolutely, I think it would. It would carry a lot away if this council approves this because we are making that decision on behalf of Edmontonians. I think that carries a lot of influence to have other partners be brought to the table. I think that that does. And also it raises the, the profile in the community as well. Community is paying attention to what is going on now, but they're focused on the, on the symptoms. But I think it is also an opportunity to engage community in the root causes and the, and the, and the more tangible solutions, I think. And also engage the business community and others in more tangible, long-term solutions.
And those, those more tangible, long-term solutions by creating maybe some more bridge housing or transitional housing that, that, that we can provide as a city might take some of the strain off of the province having to provide additional short-term shelters?
It could be many, many options. I think it's so important that through this task force, communities innovative, creative ideas are considered as well.
Okay, and that's why, that's why we need to engage these, these members in the task force.
There's a lot of wealth out there, there's a lot of ideas out there and there's a lot, lot of expertise with lived experience and, and people who work in this field. I think we need to happen to.
Okay, and, and Mr. Corbald, with the provincial task force that, that was outlined by Counselor Hamilton, is that looking at at the housing needs or is it looking more at the, the, the security concerns that the, the police are facing? I'm just wondering why the chief of police would be on the task force if it's a housing task force?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I can speak to decisions that were made by the province for it. I, it, my understanding is it's not a task force, it's a committee of cabinet.
Okay, sure.
You know, I just, just for accuracy, but I, I, I was not involved in the creation of that, so I can't speak to who's on it. We have been working with, not the committee of cabinet, I've been working with administration in the province in CSS and other departments to, to work on how we can sort of provide greater supports and how we can get more resources to provide support for both housing and for shelters and for some of the encampment work.
And I know there's been a lot of work going on in the background from both the, our administration at the municipal level and administration in, with the province.
Yeah, I would say so. We, we, we're getting more resources, we're getting more focus, we're, you know, but yeah, it's, it's better than it certainly was, for sure, yeah.
Okay, but, but this, I, I just want clarity for myself, but this, the cabinet committee then, are they looking at the housing issue and how to solve that or?
I, I believe so, but I, again, I am not part of the committee and I can't speak to what they've done in their meetings.
Okay.
Because I just not, I'm not there.
And, and that's not public knowledge as to what's been discussed?
No matter, other than what was relieved, there was a statement last week that spoke to it a bit, but that's all, that's what we know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Wright. Counselor Carmel?
Great, thank you. So maybe first of all to you, Mr. Corbald, will it be of part four allocates 3.5 million? Do you see that as money that's, that needs to be allocated by or, or allocated by the task force that would be created?
That, that would be my understanding as I read this, is the task force would make decisions on that, allocate it based on, on them coming together and hearing all these ideas.
So form the task force, task force talks, meets, decides what ought be invested, then maybe that money is available to be invested.
Yeah, that's my understanding of how this would work.
So that's not immediate. Point five talks about a report, and I think the, the due date refers to part five. So the report comes back end of February about immediate actions. So does immediate actions inform the work of the task force? Does the task force inform immediate actions?
I think it could probably be a bit back and forth. Maybe like when I think of paragraph five, what I'm thinking of is the work that we've recently done over the last two or three months on identifying city properties that could be used for for shelters. I think we can try to very quickly turn that same work around into offering it out to, to people who would like to use it for actually housing or transitional housing solutions. Because it's not, I mean, it's different for sure, but, but it's the same land. So if the land's available, we've identified it. Now it's about trying to find partners to build housing as opposed to shelters.
Right, fair enough. We're, we're going to get an update tomorrow on the work of the cabinet committee. And Mayor Sohe has sort of implied, I'll come back to you in a minute, sir, that they're concentrating on the encampment issue. This motion is largely, if not entirely, based on the housing issue. If we tie up 3.5 million dollars today through this motion, what happens if we find out tomorrow that we need to put some money in to augment what the province might do?
I don't know, I, I don't, perhaps there could be some flexibility with the task force. I, I do think that.
So maybe, let me put it to you this way, Mr. Corbald. Maybe we should focus on housing stuff today and encampment stuff tomorrow, informed by what we hear that the province might be doing.
Yeah, I think, but I think, yeah, that's what I think we're doing. We've got, they're talking about housing today and then encampments tomorrow.
Yeah, so maybe, thank you, Mr. Corbald, sorry to cut you off, I'm just watching the time. So to Mayor Sohe then, I wonder if this motion ought be refined? And I, I, I don't want to, first of all, I want to say I understand your motivation and I support your motivation. So I'm not intending to be critical or personal. And I don't want to pick over this too, too much, but I wonder if we should not amend, either delete point two or amend point two to take out the reference to homelessness, houselessness, pardon me. Understanding the advice that we receive from the city solicitor around commentary on houselessness at this moment. And I mean this moment, this day. And come back to things around houselessness after we have had the conversation, the, the inter-gov conversation tomorrow. Effectively, we can declare another emergency tomorrow if that's really what we want to do. But split the two conversations.
Yeah, to, to me.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but I, but I, I think this room, I'm going to say it again. Your motion says housing and houselessness, but everything else in the motion is housing. And everybody in the room is on homelessness and houselessness and encampments. And I don't think we have clarity there. I'm, I'm sorry if I'm being too glib, but I, I think people see the emergency as what we're seeing in the street today.
Yeah, I, I see housing and houselessness interconnected because the, the because the, the, the more we fall short on housing, the more houselessness we create, right?
I agree 100%, but we're going to get another report tomorrow that seems to emphasize houselessness. And we might be taking action that might be different if we had the, the, that input today, not saying delay forever.
Yeah, not being beneficial of that report, absolutely. But I, my understanding is that there is a specific response to one of the symptoms of houselessness, right? And my intent is connecting housing and houselessness in a way that we are looking for more tangible and long-term solutions. That's where my intent is.
Thank you, Counselor Carmel, Counselor Stevenson.
Yes, thank you very much. Just, you know, a few clarifications. I think my colleagues have asked some great questions, but, but just in this last round of question, Mr. Corbald, so my, I would anticipate that, that point five would potentially far exceed the 3.5 million that's referenced in four. Is that also your understanding?
Yeah, absolutely, and I think that's why the term in, as my understanding, the term is seed money in four because it's, you know, just the beginning, so absolutely. We already know that and that was, I think, pretty clear today in the committee report about how much resources are required to do all that, for sure.
Yeah, and then just in terms of sort of that immediate mobilization. So again, in response to Counselor Salvatore's earlier question, you know, you, you mentioned that there are potentially some, some actions that could be taken before February 27th. That's my only, you know, I'm, I'm a bit hesitant about the, the length of that time, but it sounds like if there are opportunities to mobilize resources prior to the report coming back in February 27th, you will be able to take action on those?
Yeah, for example, if, if there was a partner who wanted to use some of the land that's identified in five and next week it has a proposal, we can work with them on that immediately as we've done with a lot of shelter spaces recently.
Yeah, and just clarifying too, just in terms of delegated authorities, do you need any additional flexibility to avoid the need to wait for the next council meeting?
No, I don't believe so. I mean, a lot of what we do and what we try to do here is, you know, Ms. Petrin's team, really one of the most important things we can do is really fast-track permitting and things like that and try to identify areas that, you know, don't need a rezoning approval from council because that's going to take longer and those kinds of things. So, so I think the work we've done in the last few months on shelters can be immediately shifted towards some of the housing solutions. The seed money isn't going to be enough to build all those, but, but we can certainly work on our processes and, and help if there's other resources coming to play, yeah.
And again, and that's not to the exclusion, I mean, in terms of number five, that's not to the exclusion of, of other immediate actions related to houselessness, for example?
No, but I would say a lot, a lot of those are underway and we'll continue to work on those, yeah, yeah. I, I am a little mindful of us wanting to, and going to, we're going to need to dedicate some resources to the half program once it's announced, which, you know, we've seen that across the country and, and I think we're close. So that, I think, is a very important step that can be taken once, once we're clear on how much we have for that.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Stevenson. Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you. Item 4.4A, the establishment of a task force and community leaders to mandate mobile and to mandate, with a mandate to mobilize all sectors to create vision and raise capital that can be deployed to complement social service mechanisms. That, as I recall, is the mission of the Edmonton Community Development Corporation, ECDC, and I'm wondering if you have discussed your work with them or potentially using them as an organization?
I, I haven't, but this is something that we can definitely follow up, yeah.
Counselor Paquette?
Can we please remove the individual from the room?
Counselor Paquette, can you please call a recess? This is, this is affecting the privilege of this chambers, the outburst, Counselor Paquette.
The outburst is over, we can continue.
Can you please restore my time, Madam Clerk?
Yes, just give us one moment, we'll do that.
Please proceed.
Would you consider, I, I mean, developing a task force is, Lord knows, I love a good task force, but when you have an organization that is already allowed or embodied with, or exists to in fact do the work that you were talking about here, including raising capital, that seems like a good sort of mandate for them?
Yeah, I, I, I'm familiar with them, but I don't know how much work they have done over their existence over the last, I think, 10 years, right? So I, I don't know, like I.
Okay, so I, I guess. Is this something that I'm really still struggling with on this? Is, is this about the acute housing need of roughly 3,100 people or about the broad-based housing need of roughly 46,000 people?
It is, it's a spectrum. You know, we need 1,700 supportive housing units beyond what we already have on board. We would need transitional beds and we, then we need market, you know, say more income support for rental and all those. This is a spectrum of the needs in the community that my, my concern is that we continue to fall behind on, on where, where we need to be and we will have another 11,000 people in core housing need over the next few years if we don't start taking this as seriously as needs to be, right?
And, and I understand that and, and respect that. I believe the, Canada writ large has a housing affordability issue and would very much agree with that. But I'm also, I think a little, there's, there's some lack of clarity around, I'm going to say the word houselessness emergency and the, and, and the actions as outlined. I'm inclined to agree with Counselor. and, and the actions as outlined. Um, I'm inclined to agree with Counselor Cartmel that there will be an expectation, I think, from the people in chambers and listening online today that there will be immediate action. And I'm, I am, I think that you're outlining a much broader strategy to here. You would agree with that? This is.
For me, it is not that we will solve this issue five months, six months, right? For me, this requires level of, level of attention. That's why I call this emergency that we need to look at the, the root causes, right? And then look, then really stop the flow into, uh, into houselessness. That's why it's tied to housing, right? So.
Thank you. Um, and I'm, so I understand you haven't been briefed about directly about the, the, this provincial um, cabinet committee. Has anyone in your office been briefed?
Uh, well, we, let's share what we can, right? And, uh, uh, my last brief directly was, uh, about a month before we broke for, for Christmas. And at that time, the impression I was left with, uh, is that it's more about, uh, the enforcement aspect of, uh, what is out in the community than, uh, but I could maybe, I know Lisa, if you will.
So I received a phone call the day after the committee of cabinet was struck to inform the mayor that, uh, it had happened and to tell us that, that we, they would be reaching out to uh, Mr. Corbald to talk about attendance at the committee and what the actions would be relating between the city and the government. That was the only conversation that I personally have had. Then we had an update at council. And since then, I've had two conversations with the premier's office, but they've been related to this specifically, the call for emergency and not related to the special committee.
Thank you. Um, and sorry, Mr. Corbald, you're not, you're not a participant on this?
I'm not a participant on the cabinet committee, but I am an active participant with, um, provincial administration, especially in the, uh, in CSS department, the Community and Social Services Department in terms of, you know, jointly planning together and, um, and we'll lay all that out sort of tomorrow morning.
Is, is anybody from administration involved in this committee or advising?
No, not on the committee. I, I think, um, um, from administration, no. There was, I think, some early discussion about, uh, that, but that's not what's happening right now.
And has anyone from either the political or administrative side offered to brief council?
Yes, is my understanding, yeah.
Okay. Oh, do you, will, will we get that briefing?
We, we are planning to brief it tomorrow morning. Yeah.
Okay, with attendance from provincial representatives?
Uh, I'm not sure about that yet, but, um, we have certainly invited that to happen. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hamilton. At this point, I am looking at the clock. It is three sixteen. We have two more people on board to ask questions. And we were only scheduled to three thirty and I am certain that there are folks who are going to want to make closing, uh, statements. And, uh, or speaking to the motion. And so at this point, I'm going to call a ten minute recess so we can, uh, discuss and determine the best path forward from this point. And, uh, perhaps also everyone would like a bit of a break and a moment to reset. So. Ten minute recess.
Confirming that we are back at three twenty seven?
Let's make it thirteen minutes.
Three thirty.
Yeah, we'll come back at three, well, actually you're right, three twenty seven, we have to because as, we're scheduled till three thirty and we'll have to make a determination at that point. Yeah, thank you.
We are now live from chamber.
All right, I call this meeting back to order. Uh, if we can have order in the room, please. If we can have order in the room, please. Um, before we begin, uh, I will say that, um, we want to make space for people. We want to make space for emotions. Uh, however, this is not the appropriate venue. And, um, we want to make sure that this is a safe area for everyone, regardless of the questions they ask or the opinions they may hold. And that would, that would be the same rules for everyone at any kind of meeting we have where you might be the minority in the room. There are people who have expressed to me from the audience who have not felt safe. And as counselors, counselors have to be in a calm frame of mind, which probably comes across as quite boring. But we have to be in a calm frame of mind in order to make calm, rational and compassionate and sensible decisions. And with that in mind, if there is another outburst, and I apologize to everyone in the room who is not engaging in that behavior, if there is another outburst, we will adjourn. And that means the room will be cleared, councils, counselors will go and we will have no decision today, which I don't think is the outcome anyone wants. But we have to protect the sanctity of sound decision-making. And I hope that makes sense to everyone. And yes, there are longstanding concerns about colonization, about institutional issues. And I get that. And that really gets the blood going, right? But we are going to address that as, as well as we can within the structure that we have been given. I hope that makes sense. Thank you. So, uh, with that in mind, I'm going to, um, put a motion, uh, forward that we, uh, extend the orders of today because we were only scheduled till three thirty. We, uh.
Do you want me to put that?
If you, if you would like to make the motion, it'd actually be much better than me making the motion. Yeah. I'd have to pass the chair to Counselor Rice. Thank you, uh, Counselor Rutherford. Thank you, uh, Counselor Stevenson. Please vote.
Just for clarity, to a specific time or to finish the?
No specific time. Just to extend until we are complete the work, until we complete the work here.
And just before, uh, just before we vote, and I apologize, could we just do a roll call? Sorry, Counselor Paquette.
Of course, that makes sense. I did a head count, but I didn't do the roll call. Counselor Wright.
Hello.
Counselor Nak.
Good afternoon.
Counselor Principia.
Hello.
Counselor Stevenson.
Good afternoon.
I am here, Counselor Tang.
Hello.
Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Counselor Hamilton.
Good afternoon.
Counselor Rutherford.
Hello.
Counselor Salvatore. I was about to say Stevenson, you know.
Good afternoon.
Uh, yeah, Counselor Cartmel.
Good afternoon.
Counselor Rice.
Good afternoon.
And Counselor Chance.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Okay. So, uh, if the clerks are ready, please vote.
But sorry, sorry, Mr. Chair, just one quick question.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to double check, um, because I think we have, obviously we, we postponed the committee meeting until the completion of this and there is separate staff. And I imagine clerk staff waiting to figure out what, when they might actually answer, resolve that. I'm fine. I'm fine with just saying, you know, if we need to postpone the item from committee to the next meeting, but I'd just like to get a better sense of what we do with, with the city staff who are waiting for an entirely separate conversation.
And that is an excellent question for the clerks.
So I'm thinking, as I provide this advice, the meeting is in recess. Normally, I would say that counsel could make a motion to change orders of a committee meeting, but the meeting is live, it's in recess. So I do think that you will have to return to that meeting. If you don't return to that meeting after five, then it does continue on the next business day, which would be tomorrow, so we can manage that. But also, as a reminder, you also have a special city council tomorrow at 10:00. So we would have to do the same thing with CPSC tomorrow that we're doing with UPC, which would be to convene at 9:30 and then to recess or postpone.
Okay, with that.
Okay, that's, Mr. Chair, that's fine. I, recognizing that all that's left is essentially the final wording of a motion, and ideally voting on it without, and I'm not sure of discussion, we can probably finish that in five or 10 minutes. So I'll just leave it be, and then we'll finish it upon completion of this. Thank you.
Okay, and we're getting an okay from the chair of that committee as well, so I think we're good to go.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please vote.
Mayor, did the vote come up for you? Oh, thank you. We have all the votes.
Please display the vote. And that is carried. Okay, so we will return to our speakers list, or question list. Go ahead, Counselor Rutherford.
Yes, I originally didn't have a second round of questions, but actually, the response to the mover, to a few other counselors' questions, has actually made some questions arise for me, specifically around the task force. To me, in my use of task force in my career previously, it's convening a group of people for a very specific amount of time for a very specific purpose. But what I'm hearing as your answer is we're going to convene people to talk about solutions. And I feel like, as somebody has, that has been working in this field for years, we have, there is enough research, there is enough knowledge, there is enough wisdom. We've even done our own engagement as a city. So I'm a little bit now concerned about the understanding of what the task force will actually do.
So my understanding of the task force, and I'll come to Helen Elisa to elaborate more, is that we are not going to undertake all this. We're not starting with scratch or anything. We're not going to undertake all this. The solutions are there. We just need to figure out how we mobilize community to implement, start implementing those solutions, and tap into some of the expertise.
But are we mobilizing the 3.5 million? Is that what the task force is being used for?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the seed money, but that is not to run the task force. That is to leverage that money with more community money and resources to maybe.
So I guess my question is, is the intent, and maybe to Helen, to the mayor, whomever, is the intent that you are striking up this task force to come up with ways in which that 3.5 million can be quickly mobilized, leverage other orders of government funding to address the immediate crisis and emergency that we're in?
I mean, to answer your question, yes, that's what we're, we're hoping would happen. We talked through different iterations of what this could look like, and we're interested in having more conversations with already existing community organizations that are, could be holding the money, could be looking at opportunities for, like, the work that's already being done. We want to find ways to leverage that. I think the important thing is that this actually came out of an action that we had at a meeting with the province, where they had said to us that there is a discrepancy between how Edmonton historically has mobilized their community to respond to some of these needs versus Calgary. And that may be one of the factors in why we have a discrepancy in shelter standards and shelter funding and all of those things between the two cities. So we were really looking at ways to be able to reach into community, to have them come to the table. And that's been a request we've gotten from them, from the Chamber of Commerce and others, to bring their members to the table as part of a convening group that will offer funding opportunities. So this could be a fundraising group to just, like, leverage the money into more. But honestly, we're just at the point where we want to get community involved.
But we, but we have gotten, like, this is what I'm confused at right now. And there's so much tension because, again, I, I mean, it makes it sound like, even in your response, like, we haven't convened community thus far, that we have, right? And we have, and that's what I'm struggling with, is like, what is different about this? What is different?
If that's okay for me to add, we have, counsel has heard of a variety of solutions over the past two years.
Yeah.
And some solutions are really easy to implement through a bureaucracy, through a city, and some become challenging to implement through a bureaucracy. I don't know if that clarifies.
It does, but I'm, I'm feeling a lot of tension. I feel like that task force needs to be more focused because I know that we also have our corporate housing and homelessness strategy. And I worry that this task force is going to come in and say, do this, this, and this. And then we're going to have a corporate strategy that's going to say, well, your focus is this. And then we're going to have more tension with community. I really, I feel like this, to the mover, I feel like that, that part of the motion needs to be much more focused on activating to max capacity, the $3.5 million seed funding. And it needs to be rewarded to reflect that.
I think that, that's a very, that's a good flag. That's not, like, we don't want to generate another report saying, okay, that, you know, there's so, so much, there's a number of other reports coming forward to, to counsel. This is about implementation of some of the solutions.
Yes, so I'll, I'll just quickly try to work with the clerk on some rewording of that, and maybe I just share it and see if it's friendly.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Rutherford. I believe that we did have another person on the list. Okay, so. Yeah, can we vote for a third round of questions, please? If we have a mover for it.
So moved. Second.
Oh, were you on the list as well?
No.
Oh.
It's all good.
Okay, all right. Please vote.
Counselor Rutherford, did it come through on your side? We're just waiting on your vote.
I started working on the amendment. I'm a yes.
Thank you. We have all the votes.
Please just play the vote. And that is carried. Counselor Cartmel.
Thank you, Counselor Pickett. Just a, first of all, to Mayor Sohee. On the task force, I believe you mentioned that there would be some representation from the business community. Have you consulted the business community about who that might be? And can you outline how people might be selected for that?
Not about who, but I have heard consistently in my engagement that business community wants to be part of the solution, and they have been part of the solution, and they would like to more, get more involved. I think this will be an opportunity to engage. The Chamber of Commerce comes to mind in, as an entity, right, or that might be interested. So there might be individual business leaders from the community that are, that might want to engage, right? So I don't have any particular person in mind, but definitely, if there are people interested, they can definitely reach out to our office if this is approved.
Do you have a process in mind? Because you could get, 30 people could put their hand up, as an example.
Yeah, I, you know, obviously, then I'll work with city manager on, on the, on the selection process, right? I, what that look like, I don't know. But I think maybe we could reach out to Chamber. They may have people that they might be interested as a representative of the business community, right? Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to think about that. To Mr. Corbald, just quickly, the due date on the motion, on part five of the motion, says February 27th. Can we advance that dramatically? Is it possible to come back maybe next week with a verbal list of, like, the question is a verbal list of immediate actions? Is that too fast, or is that possible?
Well, I think anything's possible. I think the more time we have, the better value that would be. I, I guess I would say, I mean, we'll always do what we can in the time we have available. I'm not sure where this date came from, so.
So if, like, we had 30th first, right? And, but then we heard from our administration that if we want kind of a, no, they would require a little bit more time to come over the list, right?
But back to previous parts of this conversation, the implication of the motion is that something is going to happen fast. And that part of that is on the houselessness piece of this conversation. So if that's going to happen.
It would be nice if they could come earlier.
We need, we need some advice faster, I would say. I can suggest a date, but I.
Well, our advice has been we need that time. If, but if you want it faster, we'll do whatever we can in the time we have available.
I'm just looking at the calendar. So I'm going to, I'm going to suggest a date change to January 30th, which is the next regular council meeting. That may be friendly, I don't know.
Second, friendly?
Yeah, okay. That's all my questions. Thank you, Counselor Pickett.
I'm not sure if it is entirely friendly.
Oh.
I do have a question for administration on this.
Then I'll move an amendment, that the date changed to January 30th.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Corbald, we just, I mean, we heard you say that you need time to get it right, but we also hear that there's a sense of urgency for this work. But we've also heard that this work cannot possibly deal with what is happening right now in the streets. But the intent is that it's a work that will help us deal with this issue once and for all because winter comes every year, and we have houses this every year. So the timeline that's suggested in, in the amendment, I'm just curious, does that give you what you need? Or it may not be perfect, but do you iterate along the way? Like, I just want to make sure that administration can actually do work that is meaningful and useful.
Yeah, I, I think it's going to be a challenge, Counselor. Like, I, I mean, we haven't even started this yet. Heard about it this weekend, so we're working hard to try to figure out what we can do to this. I, I want to be as supportive as I can. But I'll be honest, there's a bit of frustration with things like the Indigenous Business case for housing that we put forward to the federal government 18 months ago, and haven't heard back on. And so I can tell you, my number one immediate thing will be, can we please get an answer on the request we made 18 months ago to the federal government for the Indigenous Business case? That will be number one, and I can bring that back on 30th, for sure.
So this is the challenge, that you have to be talking to other orders of government, and some of this work is dependent on them actually feeling a sense of urgency and getting back to us.
Yeah, correct. And I think my concern, we can bring all the ideas we want on January 30th, but a lot of them are going to require others to be, you know. And, and that one in particular is, is number one, I would say, because that's going to have the most impact.
Absence of that cooperation, the ideas are basically ideas that are unactionable.
Well, again, it all gets back to the resources, right?
Yeah, so if we don't hear back from other orders of government with resource allocations, then.
What, what we can do or what we can influence, I can absolutely influence city land, and I know counsel's willing to give the use of city land for free, as they've done in the past with, with other housing solutions. So we can offer that up, but that doesn't mean I can force a partner to come to the table who's willing to start building on, on the January 30th, right? So that, that's, so I'm just trying to be realistic in terms of what we're being asked to bring forward. I can absolutely bring a bunch of ideas January 30th. I, I don't think they will be sort of implementable immediately. Again, and it depends on other partners we work with, right?
Okay.
And, and again, I just have to reiterate that we've had some really, I think, amazing ideas with detailed business cases that have been sitting for almost two years now.
Yeah, I'm way out of time. So I will, Counselor Rutherford, did you have a question on this specifically? On this amendment? No? Okay. All right, and because of the motion, Counselor Cartmel, you've got an opportunity to close.
Can I, I apologize, can I just confirm who seconded that? Or was it Counselor Cartmel?
I made, as my recollection is, I made the motion and Counselor Pickett seconded.
Oh, you know what? I don't think we got it seconded because it was initially going, oh, I seconded it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, there we go. And I don't see anyone on the board to speak to, so if you want to close.
Yeah, I, I get Mr. Corbald's apprehension, absolutely, you know. On the other hand, waiting till the end of February and coming to urban planning means we're going to have a lot of speakers bringing their own ideas, that kind of a thing. So having at least a preliminary discussion on January 30th, it might not be fully crafted, it might not be a complete list, it might be, you know, an interim set of conversations, I don't know. But I'll go back to what I've been saying pretty much all day. We've got a houselessness urgency that is not really being spoken to in the rest of this motion. I understand that housing relates, I understand the relationships, that's not what I'm saying. But there's no immediate solution being offered here. And the only opportunity for that that I see is in part five, in a couple of weeks, to come with some immediate actions that might start something. I, I'm grasping at straws like everybody else, frankly.
Just want to grasp faster. Okay, please vote.
We have all the votes.
Please display the vote. And that has carried with one in opposition. Okay, so I think that takes us to the end of our questions. So at this point, if people want to sign up to speak to this motion. Oh, you have an amendment to the motion?
Amendment that I'm not, we never establish whether it was friendly or not. So I can read it, and then you, then the assembly can.
Okay, so it's not a subsequent, my apologies, it's an amendment?
It's an amendment, yes.
Please go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. So the amendment would change point four, sorry, I'm just trying to pull it up here, would change point four to that administration establish a task force led by the mayor, city manager, and an appointed member of council, consisting of community leaders with a mandate to mobilize all sectors, expedite red tape reduction related to housing and homelessness, and allocate 3.5 million from the Community Safety and Wellbeing Reserve, unallocated funding, to act as seed money to fund innovative solutions and attract additional resources of funding.
Okay, I, is this considered friendly by counsel? Okay, good. We're good to go. So we'll just add that in. Did you want to speak to that at all?
I don't think we can speak to friendlies.
I'm just giving you the opportunity.
It's okay.
I'm being very friendly. Okay, so I think that takes us to the conclusion of the conversation. What's left now is if anyone wants to speak to this motion. So if so, please start signing up on the board.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I did have one more, one, I haven't asked any questions yet. I tried to click on, but.
Here we go, okay. Counselor Nack.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate this work, and I think, thank you for that friendly amendment. I think that's a, that's a really good change. So the only piece I'm still wanting to get a better sense of, and maybe this is to, to the mover of the original motion. The sense of urgency, or the emergency part in my mind, and that might be different in other people's minds, is the, is what we heard in the report earlier today of the 1,400 to 1,700 units required of permanent supportive housing. And to me, that's the, the greatest sense of urgency because the folks who are out on the street right now are often those who have the most complex needs. And, and unless you have those units, nothing we do anywhere else is actually going to fix that. So is, that's my interpretation. Is that your view of what you would be, what, what you would heavily be focused on? I, I know there's 40,000 homes needed, everything else talked about in the earlier report, but to me, that's the, that's the urgency that I'm facing. So what, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, absolutely. At the, when we look at attachment one, right, we have identified immediate and, and medium term goals, right? And there is an emphasis on number of supportive housing that we're asking for support in, in the immediate, then for the long term, for the medium term as well. Absolutely, yeah.
And I, I guess for me, the part is, to date, while, you know, fortunately, and the report showed there was progress made, 644 units built over the last, over the previous budget cycle, that still was done fairly piecemeal. You know, it originated through the city putting 30 million back in summer of 2020. The feds came to the table at different times, but their funding isn't steady and consistent. You know, we didn't get commitment that the province was going to fund the operations until October 1st, 2020. You know, we didn't get commitment that the province was gonna fund the operations until October first, twenty twenty-two, which was literally days away from some of the doors opening. I, I want to understand, like, so, so for me, what I really want to see is how, what, when will each of those, each of those fourteen hundred to seventeen hundred units be built? Who's funding them, who's operating them, and, and start like moving on it? Not, not just, and I don't want to take a year to develop a plan to figure out when that's all gonna be built. So you, you see that being a lot of the, the heavy focus of why you want to bring those four bodies together. Is that correct?
Absolutely, I think having everybody sit on the table and be accountable to each other and, uh, i- is absolutely important part of getting things done. And you're absolutely right, last time, there was, uh, you know, not as much coordination that you would have liked to see.
Maybe to Mr. Corbald, just to check, I, I guess that's sort of what I wanted to, to check with you. You know, we had a great conversation at committee earlier today. City staff have been doing a phenomenal job of trying to manage this, but, but it has felt uncoordinated, not due to their, um, their efforts. They've worked exceptionally hard to try to advance those, those supportive housing units, but, but a lack of sort of steady and consistent, um, funding from both orders of government. This isn't one, I'm not gonna pick on the province or the feds, it's, it's both and. And, and I would, my understanding is that right now, we still don't have a clear plan. We know how many units we need, but we have no sense today of, of how quickly those might be built from other orders of government through funding that, that might be secured. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's accurate, Counselor. We're still, you know, I think we've got some good work going, going on with, you know, particularly half, half and things like that. But yeah, I mean, until we have those announcements made, until we have good clarity on who's gonna build these, it, it's, it's not as clear as we'd like it today for sure.
Okay, all right, um, I think those are gonna be my questions on this. Thank you, uh, uh, Councilor Kep.
Oh, thank you, Councilor Nack. Uh, and it looks like we do have, uh, Councilor Principe on the board after all.
Thank you, Councilor Pickett, I appreciate that. Uh, I just do have a question to legal. I just wanted to get clarification on, uh, bulletin point number two, bullet number two. Is there a legal risk in supporting that wording?
If you want to talk about legal risk, Counselor, then we, we would go in private.
Can I ask that we go in private then?
You may.
I'll move that we go in private.
Okay, uh, section twenty-seven, is that right?
Second.
All right, second by Councilor Rice. Sorry, folks, this should be quick, uh, please vote.
Not sure if the vote has come up for everyone, we were just missing.
It won't allow me to vote, I'm a yes.
Thank you, Councilor Principe, we have all the votes.
Please display the vote. And that has carried. And so we will be going, uh, in camera very briefly. What's that? We can go, we'll go in the back so that you don't have to clear the room.
I will just say, we do not have the technological capability for those on the Google Meet to join in the back. So we do need to stay in the room, we need to clear council chamber as soon as possible.
Unfortunately, okay.
Can you, sorry?
Okay, so we'll be back soon, and, uh, they'll let you know when, uh, it's good.
Confirming that we are back live.
Thank you. Okay, so we have reached the end of the day and we still have more information that we have to process. So I believe that someone wanted to make a motion. Is that right,
Sure. Thank you, Councilor Paquette. So I will move that this meeting, that the orders of this meeting be changed and that the meeting go into recess shortly and resume at 1:30 tomorrow afternoon to be completed at 5:30 tomorrow afternoon. Pardon me, 5 o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
With the recess at 3:45 as per usual.
Right. Thank you.
Second.
Oh, thank you, Councilor Rice.
Could we, sorry, could we also do the motions to deal with UPC and CPSC at the same time and if council is willing to do them as one motion with different parts?
Sure. Yeah. So second part of my motion then would be that Community and Public Services Committee meeting be suspended. I'm looking at it, can't see it. Okay, that council on behalf of CPSC and UPC direct the following. One, move the items from January 15 to the next meeting. Two, cancel January 16 meeting and move items to the next meeting. Three, this meeting continues tomorrow at 1:30.
Okay. Are you still comfortable with seconding that, Councilor Rice?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, please vote. I will, actually, I should give an opportunity if anyone wants to speak to this. No? Okay, please vote.
No. Thank you, Council Rutherford. We have all the votes.
Please display the votes. And that has carried. And we are adjourned.
Recession.
We are recessed. I wish we were adjourned.